Call the November 8th meeting of the Parker Planning Commission to order at 7:00 PM. Would you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, absent is Dwayne. Seated for Dwayne is Ruth Ann. Absent is Eric. Kim is seated for Eric. And, let's see, Kelly is, or Tracy is seated for the vacant position on the commission. So, okay. Any additions to or deletions from the agenda? I have one. In the item, Planning Commission items, we will have a discussion and selection of Acting Vice Chair to replace John Howe. That's item number nine. Anything else?
Staff has no additions or deletions from the agenda.
Okay. Next, we have the minutes from the October 25th meeting. Are there any additions to corrections to those?
Nope.
No.
No.
Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the
October 25th, 2018 meeting minutes.
I second.
It's been moved by Rich, seconded by Ruth Ann, that we approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes from October 25th. We're gonna try the new voting system here, see how it goes.
Oh, no.
Is it on now?
There it is.
Oh, here it is. Please bear with us, this is a new system. It's the first night we've used it, so it's kind of, we're figuring it out as we go along. Did it work? Okay.
Cool.
All right. Next item, number seven, public hearings. Our first item before us tonight is a public hearing on the Lincoln Professional Park property. It's a zoning, and we continued this from our meeting on the 25th. We will open the public hearing at 7:03. Stacy?
Good evening Chairman and Planning Commission members. As was just stated, this is the Lincoln Professional Park zoning. So, this proposal is to zone 8.07 acres consisting of two lots. The properties are located at the southeast corner of Lincoln Avenue and Dransfeld Road, and are to be zoned modified commercial, which will continue to allow commercial uses on the property. The current zoning is to zone the west lot, that is also concurrently being annexed into the town, and an additional lot which is located immediately to the east, that is already located within the town boundaries, to the town's designation of modified commercial. The applicant, in coordination with town staff, have developed the proposed modified commercial zoning request, in order to create one zoning for the entire 08 acres, which is both lots. The requested zoning will help ensure adequate opportunities for expansion of the town's economic base, will continue the commercial corridor along Lincoln Avenue, and will help support new businesses by providing additional land for commercial development. The proposed zoning request is to a modified commercial district, which will focus more on retail and employment uses for the property. Standards have also been added to the zoning, which will require auto-oriented uses, which is like a gas station or a drive-through, for those buildings to be placed closer to Lincoln Avenue and Dransfeld Road, to help create, help screen the parking areas, and to activate the building's edge along the public streets. In addition, the zoning will allow for increased height limits. The increased height was evaluated based on the location of the property. The property is located next to several existing uses. This includes Walgreens, Lowe's, ET Technologies, and Murdochs. These uses currently either back or side to this property. In addition, the property is along a major commercial corridor in close proximity to Parker Road, and away from any existing residential uses. The master plan calls for higher intensity uses here as well. So, the town has contemplated the annexation and ultimate incorporation of this area of unincorporated Douglas County into the town of Parker since 2002. The property is located within the central commercial district of the Parker 2035 master plan. The central commercial district focuses on core retail, services, offices, lodging, restaurants, entertainment, and to a lesser extent, higher density residential uses. The proposed zoning is consistent with this master plan. Staff has reviewed the proposal and has determined that the project is consistent with the master plan. Utility providers have confirmed capacity and availability. The project satisfies the nine criteria required in the land development ordinance to zone the property, and those nine criteria are detailed in your staff report. And the property has been posted, and public notice requirements have been satisfied. So with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend that Town Council approve the Lincoln Professional Park zoning. That concludes the staff report. I'm available for any questions you may have. The applicant's representative, Jeannie Schaefer, is here tonight and does have a presentation for you as well. And that is it.
Okay. Questions for Stacy?
No.
Okay, the applicant want to step forward? State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening Commissioners, my name is Jeannie Schaefer. I'm with Groundwork Entitlement Services. My address is 3829 Wolf Street, Denver, Colorado, 80212. I'm here tonight with Kevin Beck of Equity Ventures. He's the applicant in this rezoning application. You can move to the next slide. Sorry, that's okay. So, our annexation and rezoning request includes the two properties. The total's eight acres. There's a western property and the eastern property. The eastern property is in the town of Parker currently, zoned commercial. The western property is in unincorporated Douglas County, zoned for agricultural purposes. The annexation request is again for just the western portion of the property only. The rezoning would encompass the entire property, and would allow for a more cohesive development of the entire property by having everything under one modified commercial zone district. So, the modifications that we're proposing to the commercial district include in addition a few uses, so those are included as breweries and distilleries, convenience stores with gas pumps, and some limitations on drive-through restaurants. Uses by special review that we've added include drive-through uses with the location of the drive-through limited, indoor small motorized vehicle, engine sales and repair. Our other modifications to the zone district include the front yard setback, reduction from 40 feet to 25 feet, to allow the buildings to be pushed up to the street. And we're also requesting that the height limit be increased to 55 feet from 35 feet. So, we understand that there are nine approval criteria required to be analyzed for this proposal, and rather than go through all of them, I just wanted to touch on the first two. We feel that we've met all nine criteria, but specifically, we feel that there is a need for additional commercial uses in this area to enhance the economic and tax base for the town of Parker. Our proposed rezoning will allow a variety of commercial uses to help meet that goal. Additionally, we feel this is the correct site for the proposed development, given that it is in the town's core commercial area. So, this plan, it's a little, hopefully it's clear on your screens, but this is our conceptual site plan. So, we understand that you're not reviewing this tonight, you're just considering the rezoning, but we wanted to show you kind of what our intentions are for development on this property. So, as you can see, we are proposing to build multiple commercial buildings that would allow for smaller retail, restaurant, office, personal services, convenience store, and then the potential for a larger user on the southern portion of the site, whether that's grocery, or hardware, or some type of lodging use. But, this is what we're anticipating, this is what our zone district would allow for, for the modified commercial district. We are currently in the minor development process with the town, so the site plan likely is subject to change, but we just wanted to show it to you as an example of what we're trying to accomplish with our rezoning request tonight. So, with that, I'll conclude my comments and my presentation. Take any questions.
Questions from Ms. Schaefer?
How large in total is this piece of property?
Partially eight acres.
Did I hear you correct that you're not going to do a fast food, or you are?
It's an allowed use, I believe it's a use by special review, so we could, that could be an option on this property.
Other questions? No. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Further questions for Stacy?
Stacy, could you tell me what the surrounding parcels, what they're zoned for in terms of their height?
Yes, I can. Let me see if I can pull up a map where you can actually see this better. Bear with me just one second.
Sure.
Okay. So, located north of the property, you have Lincoln Avenue, and then north of that, there's two properties, the one where Murdochs is located, so closer to Parker Road. I don't think you can see if I
With the big white roof.
Yep, the white roof. So, that is also zoned to modified commercial. That modified commercial zone district allows for a total height of 35 feet. Just to the west of that is a planned development, that is the Parker Auto Plaza Plan Development. That allows use by right of 35 feet up to 60 feet, and that requires an additional process. Then, directly to the west, there's Lowe's, and there's a car wash there, that is also planned development. That is the Lincoln Meadows Plan Development. That is a height limit of 45 feet. To the south, that is ET Technologies. It's currently an outside storage industrial use. That's 35 feet. And then, to the east, where Walgreens is, that is straight commercial zoned, and that's 35 feet as well.
Okay.
Other questions?
So, Stacy, with this modified commercial zoning, it would allow 55 feet by right, not through special review?
Correct. Yes, so the proposed zoning would allow for 55 feet in height as a use permitted by right. They wouldn't have to go through a separate process.
And are there any views it would be impeded by a 55-foot height limit in your view?
So, walking the property, you really do sit on the backside of multiple uses. So, the backside of Lowe's faces there, the backside of Walgreens, and then ET Technologies, which is to the south, is, you're really on their storage yard. So, you're not in the front, or blocking anybody's views by increasing the height. When looking at this property, the town would like to encourage additional office uses within the town, and we would really like to see additional height, multi-story office buildings. So, that's why the increase in height, when you look at commercial office spaces, if you've limited it to 35 feet, you would usually get one story, sometimes two.
How many stories does 55 feet give you?
A 55-foot building equivalent would be Parker Station. That's downtown. So, that's that three-story building. It accounts for about three stories with the parapet walls exceeding a little bit to block your rooftop mechanical equipment.
Okay, thank you.
Stacy, have you had any public comments on this?
We have not received any public comment.
Further questions for Stacy?
Have all the criteria been met?
Yes, all nine criteria, as outlined in your staff report, have been satisfied.
All right, as this is a public hearing, anyone who has a comment on this item before us, the zoning for the Lincoln Professional Park, please step forward to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Okay, I'm gonna talk fast, and if I don't finish, you guys have copies of my comments, so.
Could I have your name and address for the record, please?
Is that good?
Yeah, could I have your name and address for the record?
Sure. My name is Kenneth Ramsey. I live at 3862 Elm Avenue, Parker, Colorado, 80134. In the Parker 2035 Master Plan, Chapter 12, is the town of Parker's goals and strategies for plants, animals, and their ecosystems. Is Parker reaching these goals? I believe we are falling short of meeting these goals. Almost daily for many years now, Parker area people who love and enjoy Parker wildlife have witnessed the callous and inhumane death and destruction of Parker wildlife. This continues to be painful and traumatizing events and memories. We live in the information age, and there are no secrets. Can we expect anyone to respect life and show empathy for others while we see adults doing just the opposite all around us? All life has a purpose. All life is precious. All life is irreplaceable. Any killing that is slow and painful is torture, and we know torture when we see it. So, I ask, what happened to the prairie dogs that lived at this annexation and zoning site for so long? Were these prairie dogs safely relocated? Were non-lethal solutions given a chance? Were these prairie dogs poisoned to death slowly and painfully with aluminum phosphate? And what has happened to the prairie dogs enjoying 2.54 acres site that is owned by the town of Parker? If anyone in the town of Parker knows what happened to these prairie dogs, let me know. If no one in the town of Parker knows what happened to these prairie dogs, then do an investigation. File a complaint with the Parker Police Department. Press charges against anyone responsible for harming them, and give Prairie Protection of Colorado permission to relocate prairie dogs back to this landlocked site. I also take this opportunity to offer the same questions about the Baldwin Gulch properties owned by the town of Parker. Prairie dogs there have been steadily disappearing there as well. How and why are these prairie dogs disappearing? For a couple of years now, I have seen news reports in other counties of prairie dogs being poisoned to death without the property owner's knowledge or permission. I believe this is happening in the town of Parker, and in Douglas County as well. If the town of Parker 2035 plan is to be taken seriously, any random killing of prairie dogs must be investigated and stopped. Baldwin Gulch properties owned by the town of Parker are prime prairie dog habitat, and must remain prairie dog habitat. Baldwin Gulch properties are also good prairie dog relocation sites. How are we going to, how long are we going to let this war on prairie dogs go on? For over 100 years, landowners and property developers have assumed we could eliminate all of our prairie dogs and live happily ever after. This is a false hope. We are putting our future at risk by allowing this to continue. The fate of our prairie dogs is very important for two reasons. First is what prairie dogs are. Prairie dogs are food for many other creatures. Their burrows provide shelter for many other creatures. They are cute, and they have great entertainment value. In short, prairie dogs are keystone species. Second is what prairie dogs do. Prairie dogs build burrows that capture and hold water. This process is called groundwater recharge, and is essential for all non-tributary well water users, and we want all of it we can get. I look forward to your answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramsey. Seeing no further, we will close the public comment. Do we need further information from staff or the applicant?
No.
No.
Can I ask one more?
I'm sorry, because I thought you might have asked for maybe another. Can I speak? I just like, I didn't know if he was finished, or
Public comment.
There's a time, or you asked for somebody else to speak.
He has another public comment.
Public comment.
Reopen the public comment?
Yeah.
We'll reopen the public comment, then?
Thank you, Chair.
My name is Joseph Sandoval. I live at 10753 Pikeview Lane, Parker, Colorado, 80138. I am also a business owner. My office is in Parker Station. The only, I understand annexation, I understand what we're trying to do here, and I think it's a great idea that we are looking for more places to build offices. I'm a bit landlocked in my office, because I'm paying an incredible amount of money for my square footage in Parker Station. So, I'm excited to see what Parker's willing to do from an annexation standpoint, for a commercial standpoint. The one thing I will say about that particular site is the traffic coming off of Lincoln into the proposed annexation site, especially coming westbound on Lincoln into that area. We see a lot of traffic specifically from Murdochs coming across to the Walgreens already. And if there's more businesses drawing to that area, I think there needs to be something contemplated from the town's standpoint about blocking that access all the way through. If you know that area, if you look from, I forgot what street the police department's on, Dransfeld. So, if you go from Dransfeld and Lincoln, looking west, that's completely divided, both on the west, or excuse me, on the north side and the south side. If you look at Lincoln going north from, Parker going north on Lincoln, Lincoln going east, and Parker going south, every one of those intersections is completely divided by a median. There are, I don't know how many accidents, and it might be worth asking the police department, how many accidents or near accidents are happening at those, that pulling in and out of that area? It's really, really dangerous. And more attraction for business, which would be great, I think would only increase that potential for accidents in that area. So, I'm not opposed to the annexation, I just think maybe some kind of traffic controls put on by either the town, or whoever's, you know, doing the property, but something's gotta be done in that area. Safety, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Sando.
Thank you.
Further public comment on this matter? Then we'll close the public comment. Further information from staff or the applicant?
Can I ask? I'm assuming that this is privately owned property?
Yes, you are correct.
And, I'm also assuming that once we get to the site plan, that will decide when we look at ingress and egress from this area?
Yes, so one of the requirements, this is just for the annexation and zoning of the property, the applicants have moved forward with a minor development plan, a traffic study has been submitted, where we will look at the traffic demands for this property, any improvements that will be necessary to Lincoln and Dransfeld Road. We do know for a fact, the existing right-in, right-out on Lincoln Avenue that currently gives access to Walgreens will remain, and that will be the only access on Lincoln Avenue. We can look at putting a divider in there, I don't know, that would be up to Engineering Public Works, and if there's enough room to get that added in there. So, the main access to the property will be off of Dransfeld.
Other questions for Stacy?
No.
No?
No, none for me.
All right, then we will end the public hearing at 7:23. Commissioner discussion?
This is a simple annexation. The mic's not on. Oh, it is on, I'm just not talking loud enough. That's a first for me, by the way. It's a simple annexation. It's been in the works probably for longer than, I've been sitting on this dais, so I don't see a problem with it.
I agree, I think it brings together the division of the Lincoln Corridor, and I do think that it's a positive that the commercial development will bring new business and new jobs potentially to Parker.
I think the nine criteria have been met, that the town sets forth on these properties in different situations, and the, there's agency, outside agencies that also have to respond, and most of them gave either approval or no comment, and I take no comment as meaning they have no objection to the annexation. And I think this will help expand the town's economic base, so I will, I see no reason to not annex the property.
I would agree with that. I think it's consistent with the 2035 master plan. It's consistent with the surrounding zoning and commercial uses, so I don't foresee a problem with the zoning proposed.
I concur with my fellow commissioners. Whenever we annex property, we're required to zone it concurrent with the annexation. So, having met the nine criteria, it meets the master plan requirements, or suggestions and desires, so I am in favor of the zoning.
I appreciate all the comments. I appreciate the comments with regards to wildlife. It is a private piece property, with private property owners looking at doing something in this case, creating a consistent zoning, and then to, and then annexing, obviously, in, and that area is very commercial. So, I think it's a perfect fit for that area, so I'm in favor of it.
Yeah, I agree with my fellow commissioners. I think it's a logical step to move towards this use on this property, and hopefully in that process, staff will work with the applicant on the traffic issues, and entrance, and exit, and so on. Do we have a motion?
I move the Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the zoning.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Ruth Ann, seconded by Rich, that Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the zoning. Signify by yes on your screen when it comes up. Okay. Pass 7-0. All right, our next item. Still figuring out this computer thing. Let's see. All right, item B, public hearing on the Norton property. It's the zoning, item number Z17-005, a public hearing on the zoning, and we will open the public hearing at 7:27. Stacy?
All right, thank you again Chairman and Planning Commission members. So, this proposal is to annex and zone approximately 9.46 acres of land into the town of Parker for both commercial and multifamily uses. The property has been posted, and all public notice requirements have been satisfied. So, the property is located on the northeast corner of Somerset Lane and Pine Drive. This is located just north of the new Douglas County Library and the Pine Curve property. It's also highlighted in red on your screen. So, a little bit of history here. The Town Council approved an agreement for possession and use with the property owner in 2016. This allowed the dedication and construction of Somerset Lane on the property. Three amendments were subsequently approved between June of 2017 and June of 2018 to extend this agreement. The applicant has submitted the zoning application in connection with a request for annexation of the subject property. The zoning request includes two existing lots. Zoning designations provide a mix of commercial and residential uses in close proximity to Parker's downtown core, as recommended by the 2035 master plan and the Main Street master plan. The two proposed lots total approximately 9.46 acres. The property closest to Pine Drive, which is the west property, is approximately 3.16 acres, and will be zoned modified commercial. The modified commercial zone district will allow for retail and service uses, as well as a gas station, convenience store. The back property, or the east property, is approximately 6.3 acres, and will be zoned for modified multifamily development. The modified multifamily zoning will allow for residential development of anywhere between five to 20 units per acre. Multifamily residential is permitted, but must be horizontally attached. This means that multifamily residential will not be stacked, and will look more like townhomes or brownstones. The zoning includes a 65-foot buffer along the eastern property line to help buffer the proposed development from the existing residential homes. In addition, a maximum height limit has been added In addition, a maximum height limit has been added that restricts building heights to 15 feet above the elevation of Pikeview Lane, and Pikeview Lane is the residential street located just to the east. The general land use map within the Parker 2035 master plan identifies the Norton property as being within the eastern downtown gateway. The Norton property is represented by a blue rectangle in the upper right-hand corner. This designation calls for uses that transition from the downtown core to the suburban residential uses to the east. Development in this area should frame the gateway to the downtown core at the intersection of Pine Drive and Main Street, and then west along Main Street to Pay Center Drive. Appropriate uses include higher-density residential, along with retail services and gathering spaces. The requested zoning is consistent with the specific goals and strategies of the master plan for the following reasons. It will encourage a variety of housing densities in close proximity to employment centers within and around the downtown core. It will continue commercial uses within and adjacent to the downtown core, and it will support new businesses by providing additional land for commercial development. The properties are also included within the Main Street master plan, land use corridor vision map, and are identified for future mixed-use development. Again, the Norton property is shown here as the blue rectangle in the upper right-hand corner. Based on the analysis, staff has determined that the request is consistent with the potential for development, as recommended by the Parker 2035 master plan and the town's Main Street master plan. Staff has reviewed the proposal and has determined that the project is consistent with the 2035 master plan and the Main Street master plan. Utility providers have confirmed capacity and availability. The project satisfies the nine approval criteria required by the land development ordinance to rezone the property as outlined within the staff report. And staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend that Town Council approve the Norton property zoning request. This concludes the staff report. The applicant is here tonight and is available to answer any questions, if you have any. And that concludes my report.
Questions for Stacy?
How many residential units did you say could go in these six acres?
So, there's a minimum density written into the zoning of five units per acre.
Okay.
With a maximum density of 20 units per acre. Just to put that into context, the traditional single-family residential that you see in town is about at a density of 3.5 units per acre. The town and country condos or townhomes that are located just to the west of this site are about a density of 11 units per acre. And then, a 20-unit-per-acre development is probably going to be more of your traditional apartments that you see throughout town.
Has the applicant agreed to the 15 feet above?
The applicant has reviewed the proposed zoning and has agreed to it.
So, I'm sorry, at this point, is there is a developer interested in doing like duplexes on that site, or?
As of this moment, we do not know if there's anybody interested in doing development on the site. This is really just, when Somerset was built and the town was looking at doing that, there was a use and possession agreement that was entered into, and that the town agreed to take in an annexation and zoning application for the property owner, so that's where we're starting.
Okay.
Yep.
Stacy, would the 65-foot buffer be landscaped, a landscape buffer?
Correct.
Is there a sort of tree requirements, or how does that work?
So, what would be required is it would still have to meet our landscape requirements when it comes in. So, our current landscape requirements, when a commercial property or multifamily property comes into town, there is a property line buffer requirement. It's one tree and five shrubs per 25 linear feet. And so, the property owner would be required to submit something that met that code.
Okay, thank you.
Could you repeat the part about the horizontally attached? Could you explain that a little bit better? You spoke very quickly. My ears didn't listen as fast as they needed to.
So, one of the requirements within the multifamily zoning is that it allows for multifamily development, but not your traditional three-story walk-up apartments. It means every...
I'm sorry. I have, I'm, I think you're still speaking a little bit too quickly. You could slow down a little bit, that'd be great.
Okay, sorry. So, not your three-story traditional walk-up apartments. What this would be is every unit would kind of have their own exterior entrance. So, kind of what you see with a townhome development.
Sort of like town and country.
Yes. Single-family residential is a permitted use in the zoning as well. So, it could be a product that's single-family detached, where you don't have the common walls, but they're just on smaller lots, or...
Like patio homes.
Yeah, patio homes. Those are kind of what could go in here.
Okay.
Further questions?
None.
Questions for the applicant?
No.
Not at this time.
Since this is a public hearing, we will open the hearing to public comment. I would ask that you hold your comments to three minutes. We don't have our little timer tonight. We'll go on the honor system. And so, please state your name and address for the record, if you wish to speak about this zoning issue that's before us.
Chair, I actually do have the timer, if you'd like to use it.
Oh, you have it? Oh, great. So, you can do that? All right, so we do have a timer. All right. See, I didn't see it up here, so I was lost. All right. And if you have any interest in speaking to this item, please step forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, Chair, or good evening. This is the reason why I came here. Expand.
I don't know if I can.
Come on, this is your job, for crying out loud. Again, Joseph Sandoval, 10753 Pikeview Lane. The adjacent development is called Parker Vista. And if you look at the most northwest corner of that development, that is 10753 Pikeview Lane, thus why I am here. I have been working with Town Council and the commissioners for, Bryce, help me, 10 years? 12? About what inevitably was coming down the road when we, when you and, or the town actually bought Pine Curve, knowing what was behind, all of my neighbors that are behind me here, as what we considered open space, never to be owned by the town, then all of a sudden, it got owned by the town, and then it got annexed, and then there was quite a bit of a battle about what we considered, I think they're still called givens, I don't know, Bryce, is that right?
It was a framework for the Pine Curve property.
Okay, for the Pine Curve property. But we kept hearing this term called givens, of which many of them is how we came up with that 65-foot green belt, beltway that you see now coming into this, you know, as everything's talked about Pine Curve. When the owner of Parker Villa first, really was fighting the whole Pine Curve annexation, he promised he was never going to sell his building and therefore, and the adjacent property next to that. Well, of course, that's not, no longer the case, because that property is not what you're talking about, annexing. We had come up with an agreement of a height requirement for buildings below us. So, now we're talking about that view from our homes coming out, going, looking westbound towards the mountains. And I realize, as I did 12 years ago when we started this process, that there's no guarantees for views, though our developer promised them, but we don't care anymore. But what we do want is, we do desperately need for you to continue to keep that promise, which is not a 15-foot above Pikeview. So, I, we, some of us that live on Pikeview, if you go 15 feet above the crest of Pikeview, now all of a sudden, we are seeing the backs of buildings. And I don't know, is Pine, is Pine Curve have the 15 feet above their street? My understanding that when we developed, when we were working on this development was that there was a location of the Parker Villa building, I think it was a chimney stack, and it was never going to go to the height of that for anything down Pine, down lower of the villa. And so, I, if that's still the case, I think that that needs to be honored for the property above the villa, which is directly below me, and about, probably about six homes that this really does impact. The second part of that is, are we down?
You're up against time, Mr. Sandel.
Thank you. Just to add, just keep with what's happening down below. And I think, for my part, I think that would be fair. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. My name is Sonia Drugen, and I live at 10759 Pikeview Lane. My house is, if you look at that horizontal red line, my house is on the bottom right, right behind the bottom right corner there. And I've also been working with Mr. Sandoval. He did a great job of representing all of our concerns.
Bryce.
For the folks on Pikeview Lane, as well as the rest of Parker Vista. We have several folks here tonight who are the original owners of those homes. I'm one of those, so is Joey. And we knew that this wouldn't last forever, certainly, but Continental Homes did tell us that it would stay somehow zoned for residential. Multifamily residential is pretty scary, I have to tell you. If you, if you guys look at the, the larger piece of property that's on Pine Drive, that's Douglas County Schools also, and we do need another school right there. I have two sons who now have my grandchildren, and they probably will be going to whatever school is built there. I think putting a gas station and all that stuff right across the street from that school is not the greatest idea as well. What I would, I'm representing four of the homeowners that live right next to me and across the street tonight. What I would like to, oh, I have some questions, actually, first, if I could ask them, and I don't know if that counts into my three minutes. I guess if I'm going to run out of time, what I would like to say is, I'd like to respectfully ask you, as part of the Council of Parker, to not rezone this, certainly to commercial, don't rezone it to commercial, and don't rezone it to multifamily. We have a lot of houses in Parker Vista, and a lot of those folks bought those houses because of the view. That's all I need to say. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Charlie Codill. I live in Town and Country at 20056 Somerset Court. And we look out on Pine. We, our front sits on Pine. And I understand their concerns for their view. Our concerns in our little community right over there is traffic. And what has, what has been done? I know that they're putting up the stoplight, but that's one stoplight, and if anybody's ever driven down Pine, you know it's a NASCAR track meet, most of the time. And it's really, really bad. In the two years I've lived there, I've seen several crashes right at Somerset Lane and Pine. And, you know, this is only going to get worse with the development. I'm not against growth or expansion, if it's properly done. I'm a little nervous, and so are a lot of my neighbors, about what the traffic influence will do. And as that nice lady said, I agree. If you zone these the way that they want them zoned, you're going to increase the traffic and possible, you know, collisions and other things, and parking, and all that other, you know, fun stuff that you guys have to deal with every day. And I respect you guys and how you do your job. So, I want to thank you, and hopefully, we can do something about the traffic over there. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Hi. My name is Tina Beebe Clark. I'm at 10751 Pikeview Lane, Parker, Colorado 80138. So, I also border right where that red line is, and I just wanted to second everything that everybody has said up until this point regarding just that, the increase in traffic, having multifamily right there, where, again, if you look at this map on this side, aside from Parker Vista, everything to the north is all single-family with very big, large pieces of land. I'm not sure, I know that our purple line went out there where we were talking about the master plan and what was zoned for, I think you said, I can't remember what you said, that purple part, when you, the part to the right, I don't remember, the purple big map. Yeah, that one. I realize that this is right on the edge of that, but thus far, everything on that side of the map, right where that corner is, we don't have anything so far like gas station or multifamily or anything like that. I just want to say, it doesn't feel like it fits. And like I said, I just want to say, me being affected by that 100%, I, I'm against this. So, thank you for listening.
Hello, I wasn't going to speak, but here I am. My name is Yekaterina Petrova. I live at 7134 Parker Hills Court. I'm one of those large properties, along with my husband. Now, Parker Hills and further Homestead Hills are dead-end streets. There is no other way for us to get out, except to go on Pine Drive. And again, with traffic, what are you going to do? Just today, coming here, it took us forever to make a left turn. And it's not just us. My parents also live in Homestead Hills, so all those properties north. It's very, very hard with traffic. So, I agree with comments about no commercial and no multifamily. Single-family houses, sure, we already have them. Commercial gas station, traffic's going to be ridiculous. We're just going to be stuck in our property, never able to leave. And I cannot accept that, so please do not approve this plan. Thank you.
Ma'am, if I can request one thing, and I apologize, can you spell your, spell your name, just for the record? Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Green. I live at 10920 Parker Vista Road. And my main concern is that area right in there is, one, used for overflow parking when there's events downtown, like Parker Days, all the holiday, is that still going to remain overflow parking?
That's not the property that we're looking at right now.
And second, there's a levee right there that's prone to flooding, so has anyone considered the fact that that area is very prone to flooding?
We'll look at that.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Janet Taher, and I live at 20039 Briarwood Court, Parker, Colorado 80138. I directly face Pine Drive, right along Somerset, and where the new traffic light will be. In the past 15 years I've lived there, I've seen at least, I can't even tell you how many accidents, one fatal. To add a convenience store and multifamily will increase the traffic, people speeding down Pine Drive, as well as the crime that could potentially be there with convenience stores. Not to mention having to look at that every day of the rest of my life. I vehemently oppose the annexation, especially for commercial. But multifamily as well, just because of the traffic and the fatalities that could potentially occur.
Didn't intend to talk, but as my wife came in, I have a question, and my concern.
Please give your name.
Yes, my name is Shyam, S-H-Y-A-M, Baby Namara, B as in boy, E as in Edward, V as in Victor, I-N-A-M-A-R-A. I live in 7134 Parker Hills Court, Parker, Colorado 80138. I live in 7134 Parker Hills Court, Parker, Colorado 80138. That's three levels up. The question I have, you showed the purple diagram with the 2035 planning, this is the first time I'm looking at it, is that where it's going to end, or is it going to continue? As in, you start the here, and then you're going to encode something up top, someone else is going to, is that where it ends? That's my first question. Second question, second thought, I agree with everyone. Pine Drive, we moved in the property five years ago, fewer developments, less traffic. I can only imagine what people lived here 12 years ago saw, but it's just going to increase. I am against commercial, multi-family, both. Single-family townhomes, I guess it's fine, we already have those. But yeah, I'm against commercial. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's David Dunn, D-U-N-N, and I live at 6820 Center Park Loop in Parker, 80138. I don't live in the same neighborhood these people do. My concern is more about Pine Drive. Pine Drive, as you come through its, its, its school with Parker Core Knowledge, there's churches, there's houses moving onto it, it's obviously going to, another school's going to develop. Putting a commercial in the middle of, I don't know where you people live, but it's putting a commercial in your neighborhood, on your block, and it makes no sense to me. I, I'm not an expert on the multi-family, that's for you guys to decide. But putting in commercial scares me because we're going to, you can just see it, it's going to start walking down, that whole street will be commercial, and you're going to change the whole way that that, the street and neighborhood looks, and I think it's a mistake.
Thank you. All right, seeing no more, we will close the public comment portion of the meeting. Questions for Stacy?
Stacy?
Mike.
Stacy, could you tell me currently this is Douglas County zoning on this property, is that correct?
You are correct.
And what is the zoning, the Douglas County zoning for this property?
It is currently ag.
Ag? One of the questions that was raised by a member of the public was whether or not the, we're planning to annex, continuing to annex north of this prop, this particular annexation. Do you have an answer for them?
Yes, so the 2035 master plan includes the Town of Parker's growth boundary. The growth boundary at this site, so where you saw the colors end, that is our growth boundary. So anything, where that blue line is, and you see the yellow and the pink, that's the Town of Parker growth boundary. So it doesn't necessarily mean that the properties are within the town, but that's within our growth boundary that we've worked out. And those are properties that should come into the town. As of 2035, that is where we expect to grow. That does not mean that it wouldn't expand in the future, but that's where it is, and that's where it stands for now.
And the properties in the, in the illustration you have with a lot of the yellow by Town Hall, Main Street, and north of O'Brien Park, where it's all yellow there, that gray in the upper right-hand corner, that's currently Douglas County unincorporated, correct?
Correct.
So there's no guarantee that Parker would never annex that, however, it's not anticipated prior to 2035 at least?
Correct.
Okay.
Stacy, isn't the gray area, is that, isn't that residential that some of the people commenting were talking about? The larger acreage?
Yes, so when you look, take these two maps separate, so the bottom left-hand map, that is just the Main Street master plan, so that is just the master plan that was completed for Main Street. The upper top-right one, that is the 2035 master plan. So the yellow on there is, represents our medium-density residential, so that's three and a half units per acre. The pink is our east downtown gateway. The purplish area that you see is also, that is our downtown core. Red is commercial. So it's just designating those areas within our growth boundary for what uses we think they, by 2035 should be.
I guess my question more was that as you move south from this property, or not south, north of this property, there are things built there currently.
Correct.
Churches, houses, what have you.
Correct.
You know, I, I know one of the people asked about further annexations that way, and, I mean, I'm not a planner and I'm not on the town council, but you generally don't annex residential and churches, really, because there's a cost to that that isn't recovered.
Correct. So located north of our growth boundary, it's not anticipated that the town would annex them at this time. Like I said earlier, it's not a guarantee that that wouldn't happen. We don't, we'd have to do an analysis of what the best use and future use of that property would be. Technically, yes, you don't see a lot of annexations for existing subdivision neighborhoods.
So, to follow on that question, so the concern regarding commercial creep going north of the property that we're annexing today is unlikely to occur?
And I don't know what the master plan for unincorporated Douglas County consists of. I haven't looked at it. So I can't say yes or no, it's just not within the town's growth boundary, and we haven't identified it for use here. Now, on the west side of Pine, that is currently identified within our growth boundary as medium-density residential, not for commercial.
Okay.
No, not right now.
Some of that area north of the purple area is, I guess, not in the town, it's in Douglas County. But in the future, the owners of those properties would have to be in agreement or in favor of getting annexed in, along with the town wanting to do that.
Correct. So the state law, there's a state law that's written for annexations to occur, and I can't tell you exactly what it is, but for existing properties, you have to have a certain percentage of that property to actually.
That was my next point, too, is a certain percentage of the surrounding area has to be already within the town, annexation of the town.
Correct. Correct.
Stacy, this may have been asked, and I didn't, don't recall the answer, is there someone applying to build there currently?
We do not currently have an application to build, no.
Okay. There were a couple other issues that were brought up by members of the public. One of them was a flooding issue. Is there a flooding issue that you know of on that property?
So just south of this property is the Pine Curve property that the Town of Parker owns. You can kind of see just the disturbed area, and I'm sorry, but my mouse doesn't show up when I show it, but just south of that property, the town just completed a regional detention pond. So there is a large detention pond that was just constructed there by the town.
Okay.
So you may see water collect there because it was just recently constructed.
Okay.
Yes.
But it's not on this particular piece property, it's on the town's property.
Correct.
Okay.
And, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
All right. The other question I had was regarding the traffic issues and the number of accidents that have been at the un, the non-signaled corner that we've had at Somerset and Pine. The, was, is there anticipated that a signal would be added at that corner?
Yes. So when Somerset got constructed, the posts and all the infrastructure was put in place to put a full signal there, so all four sides. The posts have not, and the lights have not been added yet, but it is, was constructed to allow for that.
And during the site plan process, et cetera, the addition of a signal would be required at that location necessarily?
It's all going to be dependent upon engineering, public works, triggers. For when the signal goes up, we know what is needed, and then who's going to pay for that.
Okay.
So it is worked out, and as development starts to occur and traffic studies are required, we will start to get that information.
Was the traffic study completed as part of the, not, not, was not been completed yet?
No.
But will be once, as part of the site plan process?
Right. Right. Any development of the property will require a traffic study to evaluate the use and the number of trips per day, and the access, and any additional lanes, any of that information, yes.
Okay.
Does the retention pond currently built adequately suffice to catch the water that's currently causing problems now? Do we know?
I do not know that. I know that the regional detention pond that was constructed is adequate in size to accommodate a lot of the drainage concerns that were in this area. What size that is and what it accommod, accounts for, I don't know.
Thank you.
The, the, the next question I have is about the height restrictions for the, the modified multiple-family zoning. The elevation ceiling plane is defined as 15 feet above Pikeview Lane, street elevation. How does that correspond to the chimney top that was discussed as having been a, I, I hadn't heard about the chimney top thing before this, so do we have any history on that at all?
I will look to Bryce, because I was not involved in that.
So there's a lot of history on the property to the south, lots of planning to Mr. Sandoval's comment of 10, 12 years ago. What came out of that in, was it '08, '09, was that there were some frameworks set aside, kind of high-level agreements. They weren't specific to widths, heights, but it was agreements for that site regarding the need for a buffer, view, maintenance of views. The existing zoning on the Pine Curve site right now is greater downtown district, so it's allows for four stories and 60 feet, I think. There was a zoning proposal that was going through the process that was addressing some of these height and buffer requirements for various reasons, it didn't come to fruition. But during then, there were some specifics within that zoning, but again, it never came to fruition, and quite frankly, and I apologize, I don't remember much about those specifics.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Bryce.
Stacy, when this was brought to you, what are the other, you know, did, did commercial, was there, was this done by the applicant to ask for the commercial and residential?
So it was really a, kind of a coordination between the Town of Parker and the applicant, the property owner, in looking at what does our master plan call for the property? And then what would it be viable for? And when you look at the 2035 master plan, the Main Street master plan, what those uses surrounding the property could be in the future, it makes sense for Pine Drive to be that commercial lot, to be that buffer between the existing residential to the east. So you could have additional, you have Main Street just located to the south, the new library there at the corner, the Pine Curve property, I don't know what that could be, but it could be commercial. And then you'd have that buffer between the existing residential, the commercial, which usually is your multi-family. We understand there will be no three-story apartments here, it will be the lesser dense, most likely, just to get the product in there, but it is, it could be multi-family.
And I understand that there's no site plan on this now, and that, you know, nothing's been proposed, which is, I think, half the concern. As the site plan is brought to us, can the Planning Commission recommend to town council that that height restriction be lowered, or, I don't know, what, do you know the height of, I apologize, which street is this, above?
Pikeview.
Pikeview.
So within the zoning document, we had our surveyor, the town surveyor, go out and actually survey the elevation of that road. And so any request for development or a site plan on that property would have to use that standpoint to not go 15 feet above. To answer your first question was, could site plans in Town of Parker are processed administratively? There is the option for a push-up provision where we could push it up to Planning Commission. But you could not reduce the height if it's already approved within the zoning. The reason we chose, and we looked at this in 15 feet, 15 feet is technically about one story. And so 15 feet above Pikeview Street would allow for about one story to go above into their view shed.
Right.
The second story of that house would technically still have their view, but it would be the second story. And so that was why we looked at 15 feet.
Does it severely restrict a developer to take and reduce that so that it's not obstructing their view shed? I mean, how, how much shorter does a building, because it's quite, it's quite high. I mean, the, there's quite a hill there. So if the, if the builder's not allowed to build 15 feet above Pikeview, but say, you know, could not exceed Pikeview, so in order to preserve their view shed completely, what kind of, does that create an unreasonable restriction on a developer?
So it would really depend on the grading of the site, which we don't know what that's going to look like currently. At current elevations, we looked at that hill, so as you go to the east side of the property, there is a hill that goes up to the properties that are there. It's estimated at about 15 to 20 feet. So if you wanted to restrict it just to the bottom of Pikeview, it could be a 15 to 20-foot building in that area. And based off of what we're seeing in building heights, 15 feet is about the math, the minimum you can go for a single-story unit. So going any shorter than 15 feet would probably not be possible. It would really be based off the grading of the property, if they graded it down, made it lower, if it had to come up for some reason, it'd all be dependent upon that and what kind of development that would allow.
Thank you.
Further questions for Stacy?
I do. Did staff consider any other potential zoning for either of these lots at all, or?
So we did a great analysis on this property for what is the master plan, like I said, and then what could you get? The master plan really does recommend that higher-density residential at this location, so allowing for the single-family, and just zoning it single-family might not have met the master plan designation, having that, so that's where that cap or that minimum came in was to, minimum of five units per acre. So it's not your medium-density residential, which is located to the east, but it really did add that higher density, maybe one and a half units per acre, to meet that master plan designation. And so we looked at what could go there. It is, that back site is six acres, so it's not huge, but it is six acres, so there is the possibility to get some density there, with the 65-foot buffer and those sort of things. I don't know what the density would get there, but we did look at everything of what you could put there, limiting the commercial to the front, looking at the residential in the back and what met code.
Okay, thank you. And then as far as the commercial zoning, would it be, it sounded like the most concern had to do with gas stations or convenience stores, is there a possibility of excluding those uses from the zoning?
So based off of the zoning, there's always the opportunity. So within the commercial zone districts for the Town of Parker, a gas station, convenience store is a use permitted by special review. And this modified zoning, we did allow it as a use by right, and that was through negotiations to get Somerset built on this property. But there is that opportunity to make a recommendation to restrict it.
Okay.
Additional questions?
Yep.
All right, then, we will close the public hearing portion of this meeting, and we will move on to Planning Commission discussion.
I think our duty as commissioners tonight, based on either annexing slash rezoning of this property, is to make sure that the nine criteria have been met, and that the outside agencies that give their approval are no comment, as meaning no objection to it, is, is met. And the concerns that everybody has raised, whether it be water, traffic, or height restrictions and so forth, I think that is for us to look at and determine in our next step on this when it, when the property comes to development. So I would say we, there's no reason why we shouldn't approve this for rezoning right now.
I'm concerned about approving it as written with the 15-foot above Pike Avenue, Pikeview Lane being allowed as a, as a matter of right. I'd rather. Pikeview Lane being allowed as a, as a matter of right. I'd rather see something as a, an opportunity for us to have a second look at it, to see how it's actually being implemented. I have a great deal of sympathy for people who have a view and who then are going to lose that view by having something built where it didn't look like it was going to be built when they bought the property. So, I'm just, I'm very sympathetic to that, and I would, I would like to see that changed to some sort of use by special review, if possible. I don't know if maybe we could continue it and look at it again. I don't know if that's a possibility.
I agree with Ruth in that, um, when you're looking at the height and you're looking at the loss of not so much the view, my concern would also be the access to what's going in. You're going, the more you put in, the more access you're going to need, the more people, the more cars, the more traffic. And that is a concern. I also feel that 15 feet above, if you stay to the normal height, it would probably be more acceptable. So, I would hope if there is a way of listing proposed conditions, that we would be able to do that.
I guess I have a concern about, I think, just private property rights that, um, I guess I recall a long time ago in my life, I was a school principal and had one of the first schools in Highlands Ranch, and I had a mom told me that the builder said nothing else was going to be built south of her home. Well, after that, about 25,000 homes were built there. Uh, so, I mean, I, I get that people are, are told about view corridors and those things, and I understand that, but we also have an owner of this property, and are we taking away their property rights by some, you know, that, well, these people were here before you, and so that, you know, trumps your right. I don't know, I, it's just out there for discussion.
I, I see your point, Gary, but I, I still feel that it's, um, I just think we need to look at this a little more closely. I think that if staff could take another look at it and see if there's another way to do it, so there's a little more control, um, over what, what's done in terms of height, I think that would be better for the, for the community, um, overall.
Now, the, the height issue, is that better addressed in our next step and where something that we could deny?
So, um, it's actually better addressed here, and if the commission would like, I can, um, propose some language if you want to propose a, a proposed amendment or, or condition.
That, I would, I'd appreciate that, or, or continuing it and looking at it again after whichever would be easiest for staff to deal with.
I, I think a condition probably would be easier because we don't have the ability to do any more analysis on the future grading of it.
Okay. If you give me...
I was going to say, I, I actually agree with Gary too, and, you know, this is not a forced annexation, this is an owner-requested annexation. I understand the, um, I, I completely understand the concerns of the neighborhood behind. Every time there is growth and expansion, and we're all part of the problem, that is what happens. We get more traffic, we get more, there's more accidents. I, I drive this every day, and I agree wholeheartedly with the person who said it was pretty much the Indy Raceway. Putting a light there, I would hope can, you know, negate some of the issues we have had on Pine Drive. However, again, I, I come back to this is an owner, owner-requested annexation. It fits the 2035 master plan, which, um, we all have a say in when we are residents of Parker. But I would really like to have that additional language on potential height restrictions.
I will write it down.
You'll write it down.
I'll write it down. I agree with you, Kim. I'm in agreement. What, what would that language be, Bryce?
So, um...
For a condition, Bryce?
Yeah, so this would be for a condition based on what I'm hearing from the Planning Commission about the concern about height. Perhaps it's something like, um, a condition to reduce the height plane to, I'll say zero feet above, but, but it's Planning Commission's determination, zero feet above the center line of Pikeview Lane and allow for 15 feet above Pikeview, Pikeview Lane as a use by special review.
Okay. I'll need you to read it one more time, 15 feet.
All right, sorry, a, a little slower, right? Reduce the height plane to zero feet above the center line of Pikeview Lane.
Stop.
Okay.
Okay.
And allow for 15 feet above Pikeview Lane as a use by special review.
The, the use by special review would then come back to us if there was a use, it was that administrative? No, I, I can't remember.
No, you're, you're accurate. It would come back before you and town council.
So, the, what this language would do is it would not allow, um, there would no longer be a use by right. So, no developer, as I understand this, would be able to come in and say, "Well, I want to build something that's 15 feet above Pikeview, and I have a use by special, but I have a, a right to do that because of the zoning." Instead, it would only be able to go up to zero for the center line of Pikeview. If they wanted to build higher than that, it would have to come before Planning Commission and have another hearing. Correct?
Yeah.
Okay, that, that works for me.
Would we also be able to comment prior to?
It would be a public hearing.
Yeah.
Like tonight.
We're, we're not taking questions now, that part is over. We're trying to...
But we're not, we're not politicians here.
No, it is not.
I, I'd just like to say something. I think we're getting way too far ahead of the site plan. We're all assuming the worst. This has to be done, I understand that...
You need to have order in here.
This has to be done by code, it has to be done by plan. This doesn't allow, you know, none of this just allows anything to come in and just, you know, be built willy-nilly. There's some pretty high standards for the town of Parker. It does fall within the master plan, and we have to, you know, we're looking at the annexation and the zoning. We're, we can't even move into a site plan without knowing what will be proposed.
I guess I'll, I'll open it up to discussion among commissioners if anyone thinks that would be reasonable to limit the zoning, to eliminate those two uses from the zoning, or if that is not reasonable.
The convenience store and the gas station, so make that an additional condition?
Mm-hmm.
I have no objection to doing that. Or making that a use by special, additionally a use by special review.
Yeah, perhaps instead of eliminating it outright, make it a, a use by special review as well.
That makes sense to me. What do you guys think?
Stacy, could you just repeat what you had said earlier about the, about that when you acquired the land? What, what was that?
So, as stated earlier, the history of this property was when the town went to build Somerset Lane, we entered into a use and possession agreement with the property owner to get that land to build the lane, to build that road. One of the conditions in there was that it would be annexed and zoned into the town as the property owner had wanted, and the use of a convenience store, gas station would be allowed.
So, is that something we're allowed, or is that something that we can object to or not? I mean, that sounds like you have an agreement in place.
I think you can make a recommendation for what you think you want, and then it could be evaluated at the time of town council.
So, we could add...
Bryce, if, if there was an agreement made...
So, so the agreement was to process the zoning. Obviously, any zone change has to go through a public hearing process, including a recommendation by you and a determination by town council. So, that's what this process is.
Okay. So, would this language work, Bryce, to add to our conditions to remove freestanding gas canopy and convenience store with or without a gas station as a use by right, and make both of those used by special review?
Yes, that would work as a condition.
Okay.
Discussion of that.
Work for you?
I think that makes sense to me.
Okay. All right.
All right, do we have...
I took the notes, so I can make the motion.
I guess. It's this one.
Right, I've got it right here. I move the Planning Commission recommend town council approve the zoning request subject to the following conditions. One, reduce the height plan to zero feet above the center line of Pikeview Lane and allow for 15 feet above Pikeview as a use by special review only. Two, remove freestanding gas canopy and convenience store with or without a gas station as a use by right, and make them available as a use by special review only.
All right, we have a motion by Ruth. Is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Eliana, that Planning Commission recommend town council approve the zoning request subject to the following conditions. Uh, it's to reduce the height plane to zero above the center line of Pine, Pineview Lane and allow for a 10, 15-foot by use by special review, and eliminate the gas station, gas canopy, that language, uh, except by a use by special review. Is that, summarize it?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Signify your approval by yes.
Oh, thank you.
It passes 6-1.
Okay, what's next?
Item eight is a public hearing on resolution number 18.088, a resolution to adopt an update of the Parker 2035 master plan. We will open the public hearing at 8:22. Uh, Carolyn?
Your mic's not on. Sounds like it's on. Tonight I'll be presenting an overview of the Parker 2035 master plan updates. Staff proposes to update the master plan to include minor revisions to the plan and to the general land use map. The 2035 master plan consists of 15 chapters that serve as a statement of town policy, a guide to decision-making, and a framework for more specific planning. The master plan is not a zoning ordinance, a land, a land development code, or a specific development plan. The master plan serves as a 20-year policy document that provides vision and direction for land use, community appearance and design, housing, neighborhoods, transportation, and natural resource protection. Town, town council adopted the 2025 master plan in 2005, and subsequently updated and adopted the 2035 master plan in the year 2014. The master plan addresses the state's requirements for cities and towns to make adopted, make an adopt, an adopt a master plan. It also provides a framework for decision-making and direction for growth and development. The plan is a living document that is updated from time to time. Community, community outreach for the update included a public notice that was published in the Douglas County News Press. The redline document was posted for public comment on the town's website, followed by a press release and social media and Facebook postings. A community open house was held on November 7th and was well-attended. Staff would like to thank the Planning Commissioners for attending the open house and providing review and comments on the master plan revisions. Town staff will make all necessary corrections that were identified to the final document. To summarize the proposed minor revisions, in chapter two, the urban growth boundary has been renamed to be labeled as Parker Planning Area, and all information about the Douglas County IGA has been removed. In chapter four, we have added references for the, the Parker Planning Master Plan, the Parks Recreation and Open Space Master Plan, and we've added a section called Town Council Policies Regarding the Plan. In chapter six, we've updated the land use map to include reference to the Main Street Master Plan area, and we've labeled the Parker Planning Area on the map as well. The character areas in chapter six were also updated. The downtown core and the east downtown gateway character areas are now consolidated into the Main Street Master Plan area. Land use for this area will focus on mixed-use development to promote a more walkable environment and high-quality development that emphasizes streetscapes, building heights, and high-quality architectural design. The neighborhood and community center section has also been updated to provide guidance for future commercial development at intersection corners and areas designated as either a neighborhood or a community center. Based on Parker's development patterns for commercial development, the neighborhood center section has been updated, and staff recommends that this section be amended to show 33% or eight acres, whichever is more, of the total land area to be zoned and developed for commercial use at key corners of intersections. This is an example of a neighborhood center that's located at the corner of Jordan Road and Main Street. For the community centers section, staff recommends that this section be amended to show 33% or 20 acres of a total land area, be zoned and developed for commercial use at key corners of intersections. Mixed-use zoned areas will be 33% commercial, which can be reduced if the parcel is developed as vertical mixed-use. This is an example of a commercial center at the Stro, Stro Road and Parker Road. Chapter 10 has been updated with a new strategy to ensure that the new complete streets policy is utilized, and we've also added a reference to the transportation master plan to this chapter as well. Chapter 13 references the new Parks Recreation and Open Space Master, Open Space Master Plan that was completed earlier this year. Staff recommends that Planning Commission recommend town council approve the resolution to adopt an update to the Parker 2035 master plan.
Do you have any questions?
Questions for Carolyn?
Nope. I attended last night, and I think you guys did a really phenomenal job. I took my husband for the first time, and he was quite impressed with what was out there, so thank you, because I know that took a lot of effort.
Further questions?
I would commend staff on the updates that they did. I thought they did a really good, I thought y'all did a really good job.
As this is a public hearing, we will open the discussion to public comment. If you have a comment on the adoption of the minor changes to the 2035 master plan, please step forward and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion, Planning Commission discussion.
This is pretty cut and dry. That's the next step. It's the natural, natural progression.
I'm, I'm sorry, sir, you have to close the public hearing.
Yeah, we will close the public hearing at 8:29. Sorry.
Back to what I was saying, this is a natural next step, and I think it's a good revision. I like the addition of the additional acreage and to open space to the new, to what's going on. So, thank you again.
Yeah, I think all these amendments are just straightforward, kind of administrative amendments, so... amendments, so don't foresee any issues with them.
Yeah, I think all the revisions are necessary for better clarification.
I agree.
I concur.
I have nothing to add.
I certainly support all the efforts of the town staff in keeping this document up to date and making it a kind of a living, breathing thing. Do we have a motion?
"I move the Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the resolution to adopt an update of the Parker 2035 Master Plan."
I'll second.
It's been moved by Eliana, seconded by Rich, that Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the resolution to adopt an update of the Parker 2035 Master Plan.
Third vote in, we're getting pretty slick.
It was me, I'm a slacker. I was looking for a piece of gum. My mouth is dry.
You did. Gotta go. There it is.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Next item, Planning Commission items. As we discussed last meeting with Commissioner Howe's resignation, he was the, and I'm trying to think of the term again.
Vice Chair.
Yeah, the Acting Vice Chair of the committee. We, Rosemary was in contact with Dwayne, who's out of town today, and he was the, whatever the next position is, and I don't recall what that was called.
Call Vice Chair.
So, John Howe was Vice Chair.
Okay.
Dwayne was Acting.
Acting Vice Chair, okay.
Oh, I thought it was called.
All right, so, anyway, he said he would be more than happy to do that. His work schedule is, is not going to change a lot, so he cannot, you know, necessarily guarantee he can be here every meeting. He just wanted to be upfront about that and he'll, said he would be comfortable with whatever the commission decided. So, I guess we have a couple of items, depending on how we want to look at it. We have a couple of items before us. So, discussion.
Well, as long as you're never gone, Gary, it's not an issue.
Yeah.
Well, you've been gone once since I've been here.
I check the obituaries every morning in the paper. If my name's not in there, I move on.
And I have absolutely nothing against Dwayne. I think he's a vital part of this commission and even though he has gone a lot, maybe it would just be easier to leave him as the Acting Chair and just choose a Vice Chair.
So, would we choose, would one of us become Vice Chair? We open up a new position? How does that work?
Well, John's position is vacant as Vice Chair.
Okay, so we would just, oh, there would be an opening for Vice Chair?
Yes.
Okay.
I would think that with Dwayne's tenure, and even though he's not here often, he still should move into the Vice Chair position, only because of his tenure, his experience, and when he is here, he's a tremendous contributor.
Yeah.
So, I would think that that would be the next natural step for, for Dwayne. We've all learned a great deal. I personally miss John. John was a wealth of information and knowledge, but if there's any, anyone who can fill the shoes, it's definitely Dwayne.
I feel pretty strongly about Dwayne. He's, he's extremely well-spoken, he's knowledgeable, and I've learned a lot just sitting up here with him.
So, I guess first, well, we're not doing this on the machines or anything, but do we have a consensus to have Dwayne, I think I was hearing people say, move into the Vice Chair position?
I think so, but I think we do need to fill the Acting Vice Chair role as well.
No, I do. I agree with that. But I'm just trying to do it a step at a time here.
Right.
Oh, fine.
Because otherwise it starts moving too fast.
Be all logical.
Yeah. So, I guess let's just do it by a show of hands, all those in favor of having Dwayne move into the Acting or the Vice Chair position.
Vice Chair position.
Looks like that passes.
That's unanimous.
That's unanimous. Nominations for Vice Chair. Fire away, guys.
I would, I would nominate Richard. I think he has the second length.
Well, I...
Ten, or are you...
Eliana.
Oh, would you like to be the Vice Chair, Acting Vice Chair?
I wouldn't mind it.
Okay. I mean, I think the people who have served the longest have the most experience and I am all for following that.
Excessions.
Yes.
Thank you for recommending me too, but either one of us, I would be fine with, whichever you choose.
Well, then I will nominate Eliana. He has been on the, on the board longest, I guess.
But do we have that or are we just doing it on a piece of paper?
Do that tonight, Rosemary? Okay.
It's not like we don't have 10 reams of paper up here.
You have extra paper.
I have extra paper.
Somebody actually has to nominate.
She just did.
We can't do it by show of hands like we did for Dwayne.
Does anybody else want to be nomin, Richard, do you want to be nominated? We'll vote between the two of you? You want that?
Yeah, if I'm chosen, I'll do it.
Okay.
Okay, so our nominees are Rich and Eliana. Write down your selection on a piece of paper.
Oh, here, you gave me like four pieces.
Small.
I'm not numb, I'm not, I'm not, I'm opposed to voter stuff.
What did she say?
Voter, voter stuff.
Come down.
There you go. Multiple pieces of paper.
I, I thought we were handing them around.
Is there a hat?
Is this, do I have everybody?
Yeah.
I saw one.
Is there a hat?
While Rosemary's counting all those ballots, probably shouldn't take longer than what the county's taking to count the school election. Uh, no.
There's no late ballots.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah. Uh, we have a request from Bryce for a study session November 29th, 2018.
Yes, sir, as, as you are aware, I believe, we, it's a tie.
It's tied, right?
No.
It's tied.
No.
Somebody didn't vote.
Somebody didn't vote.
How many do you have?
You gotta break the tie.
Not here, no, it's not.
You got, how many you got?
Oh, wait, there's a big one.
All right, so Eliana is the new Assistant Vice Chair. I think I'll be gone next time. Anyway, Bryce, the request for special session.
Thank you, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. As you all are aware, we are beginning the process of updating our land development ordinance. Planning Commissioner is, Planning Commission is a significant user and stakeholder in that process. Our consultant would like to hold an interview with the Planning Commission on November 29th at 5:30 to hear your, where you think there are opportunities, challenges, and where you think the land development ordinance is doing well. So, that is the basis of the request for the special study session.
We have to do a motion, is that correct?
Yes.
Somebody...
Oh, I move to approve the addition of a special study session November 29th.
I don't know how we're gonna vote on that.
At 5:30?
At 5:30 PM.
Second.
It's been moved by Eliana, seconded by Kelly, that we approve the addition of a special study session on November 29th, 2018 at 5:30. Is there a way we vote on here on that or just...
Same way.
Oh dang, I turned it off.
So did I.
Oh, come on.
I missed my little button.
That was on it.
Can you vote twice for me?
No.
But I'll vote slow so you can catch up.
Thanks, appreciate that.
Kim, did you vote?
No, mine hasn't come up.
I'm voting for her.
Mine didn't come up the first time. Did you see that, Rosemary? The very, very first, the very first vote we did, for some reason, mine didn't come up.
For the meeting minutes.
Mm-hmm. I'm just gonna double check back.
You gotta go, you gotta go.
I don't know, I have to go back and...
I am in.
Okay. So am I.
Is that a regularly scheduled Planning Commission night?
No.
It's not, right?
It would be Thanksgiving.
Special, okay.
Well, no, it's a Thursday.
But it's not one of our regular Thursdays.
It was not on our calendar.
Not our regular...
I believe it's the fifth Thursday.
Right, it's...
Got it.
After Thanksgiving.
It is after Thanksgiving.
Because if you want to come on Thanksgiving...
Oh, not again.
I don't.
You all have to feed us.
I, I did, but I logged back in.
Okay, I don't have one either.
Did you vote yes? Kim, did you vote yes?
No, I haven't had the thing and Eliana doesn't have the...
Would you vote?
Oh, would I?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
I would, I could on a horse. Somebody better bring a turkey.
Yes, I would vote yes. She can do it from there.
Second of all, before people log out again, you need to look at the dates, which is item on below the bottom of your agenda, the dates for next year.
Well, there it is.
My favorite thing rolls around again.
Oh, what? Seriously, Valentine's Day?
This is my second time through with that.
I know. Once every seven years.
I know. Last time I voted in favor of meeting on Valentine's Day, but I think I was overruled when I, what was my...
I'm all in.
Yep, so...
I'm good.
So, that date in lieu of is a question mark, so that's up to you guys to decide.
It's a suggestion that they, we move the meeting to February 7th rather than Valentine's Day.
I don't mind coming on Valentine's Day, but I'm, I'd be concerned about members of the public who maybe would want to come to a hearing who would have a conflict.
So, move to the 7th?
Move to the 7th.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Do we need a motion for that, Rosemary, or just, no, to adopt the dates or...
Or to move it.
Just what it says on your paper. "I move to approve the 2019..."
Oh, I got it, I got it, I got it. "I move to approve the 2019 Planning Commission meeting schedule with the proviso that the February 14th date is moved to February 7th."
I second.
It's been moved by Ruth Ann, seconded by Tracy, that we accept the 2019 Planning Commission meeting schedule, except for Valentine's Day. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Well, we gotta wait for the thing, right?
We do.
She's doing the thing.
She's doing the thing. There it is.
Thank you.
You rocked this tonight, Rosemary.
No, I didn't. She's over here telling me what to do.
That's okay. That's all right.
You started.
No. Rosemary. One thing I did want to, I don't know if anyone can hear me, I do know that sadly John's wife is going into hospice.
Yeah.
And I am, what I'll probably do is get a card for the next meeting, just so that he knows.
Let me do that, Eliana.
Okay. I'm happy to get it if you want.
Is this hospice at, at home or at a facility?
I believe she's going to the facility.
Yeah, because she was at home at hospice.
Right, but I think it's...
Okay.
Okay.
I think it's gotten some progress.
All right, well, thanks for that update, Eliana. All right, anything else, Bryce? And we will adjourn at 8:44.